Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'd like to call to order the December 17th, 2014 meeting of the Frederick County Planning Commission. Could you join us in a moment of silence, please?
Yes.
Thank you. We have no changes to the agenda.
Madam Chair, move for adoption.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We do have a few committee reports, I do believe. One is comprehensive planning, and Ms. Rose is going to do that for us.
Yes, ma'am. We met on December the 8th, and basically just discussed the CIP and forwarded that onto the Planning Commission Board for their review.
Thank you. Mr. Unger?
Yes, ma'am. We met last night at sanitation department. Report was total customer base for water as of today is 14,195. Sanitary is 13,710. Rainfall for last month was 2.0 inches, which is a little low, but the previous month we had 4.18, so we're still averaging out real good. Deale plant, we pumped out 2.37 million gallons per day, which is more than we usually do. Anderson plant, we pumped out 1.68. We purchased 0.75 billion gallons per day from the city. Daily average was 4.8, which was lower than last month, which was 5.1. They contributed that to the weather. We're not using as much lawn water and stuff like that. The elevation, the Anderson plant, it stayed almost exactly the same, which was real good. The Deale plant actually stayed identical, the same as it was last month, and they did pump it pretty hard, so it's really recovering well. The flows at the paper mill plant are, everything is still good. Hydrogen, CBOD, nitrogen, phosphate, it's all within range. Nitrogen's a little high, but I think they're going to be okay with that. The Pecking plant is doing very well. They're doing about 2.1 million gallons per day. And one good thing they had this month, they had 2% water loss, which they've been running around 10, which is real good. They've found some more leaks and things. And hopefully in January, they're going to be digging a test well at Round Hill and at Lake Frederick to try to get some more water for the county. And the other thing that was reported on, Gene Fisher come in there, and he's liaison for the board, and he wanted the authority to call people in Stevens City. They're having problems with backup in their basements, and keep them abreast on what they're doing to solve their problem, because I think communication hasn't been well there, so I'm trying to fix that, too.
Thank you, sir. Let's see, I think from the city of Winchester, we have Mr. Slaughter from the Planning Commission. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Not a lot in the city to report. Our last meeting, we did have a conditional use permit for telecommunications tower modification. We had a couple rezonings that were tabled, one on Millwood Avenue, and the other one on the Mayorman's Lane extension would be property that's going to go across from the future John Kerr Elementary School. And then we had, we passed on to council and ordinance that would allow mobile food trucks in the city. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hess from the Board of Supervisors, anything for us?
Yes, Madam Chair. Since the last Planning Commission meeting on November 5th, the Board of Supervisors has met twice, once on November 12th and once on December the 10th. At the November 12th meeting, the board agenda included five planning items that had previously come before the Planning Commission. First, the supervisors held a public hearing on and approved rezoning application 04-14, which re-zoned the Baker and Lekley properties in the Back Creek District from MH1 to RA. Second, they held a public hearing on and approved the Southern Frederick Area Plan Amendment to the 2030 Comprehensive Plan. Next, the board held a public hearing on and approved the ordinance amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 165-203.02, regarding a waiver to the buffer and screening requirements if the adjoining land is designated for similar zoning district in the adopted Comprehensive Plan. And similarly, they held a public hearing on and approved the ordinance amendments to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 165-201.1, regarding elimination of the screening requirement for adjacent outdoor storage areas. And finally, they approved a resolution of support for the 2015-16 VDOT revenue sharing program. And then at last week's meeting, we held a public hearing and approved the conditional use permit 03-14 for the operation of a daycare business by Carolyn Watson on West Moreland Drive in Stevens City. That was approved with a minor adjustment to the operating hours after consultation with the applicant. The board then received the rezoning application number 02-14 for Heritage Commons, which contained some minor modifications from what had been presented to the Planning Commission in November. The board hearing was held, and the applicant requested that the action on the request be postponed until the first Board of Supervisors meeting in January, so that additional changes could be made in the application in response to concerns expressed by the county. The board agreed to the postponement. And, Madam Chair, I'd like to conclude my report by wishing the commission members a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. This is a point in our agenda. If anyone in the audience has something they'd like to speak with us about, we'd be happy to hear it. Seeing none, we will close the citizen comment portion.
Madam Chair, I'll need to confuse myself for the next two items.
Yes, sir. Okay, the first item is an action item for the commission. It's a zoning district buffer waiver request for Clearbrook Business Center submitted by Gray Wolf Inc. to request a waiver of the required Category C zoning district buffer between parcel 33-A-123 and the adjacent Vahidi property, which is identified as 33-A-125. The Clearbrook Business Center is, property is zone B3, industrial transition, and the adjacent Vahidi property is zone RA, rural areas district, and also contains a residential structure. The Comprehensive Plan depicts the Vahidi property with future commercial business use. Clearbrook Business Center property is located at 3625 Martinsburg Pike, Clearbrook, and is within the Stonewall Magisterial District. Mrs. Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and members of the commission. As you stated, this is a request to waive a Category C buffer between the property, which is called the Clearbrook Business Center, and the adjacent Vahidi property, which is, which has a residential land use. They may remember, excuse me, the master plan for the Clearbrook Business Center came before the Planning Commission back over the summer, and it was approved administratively at the end of August. This is a location map for the property on the screen to your left. Now, the Clearbrook Business Center properties are outlined in black, and then the Vahidi property is this property to the north in this area. As you can see, this also shows the land use from the 2030 Comprehensive Plan. All the properties are shown in yellow, which is a commercial designation. So as you stated, the Clearbrook Center is B3. The adjacent property is RA with a residential use, which kicks in the requirement for a Category C buffer, which is 100-foot buffer. The 2030 Plan shows both properties with the same designation. Therefore, if Vahidi was rezoned in conformance with the plan, the buffer would not be required. So this is a sheet from the master plan. It was also included in your agenda. As you can see, the northern property line, the area in red is the area that they are requesting to waive. Recently, there was a zoning ordinance amendment that was approved by the Board of Supervisors that allowed the board to consider waivers or modifications to required zoning district buffers in the commercial districts when two things do occur. That first, both properties have to have the same Comprehensive Plan designation, and second, the adjoining property owner, that is the RA residential piece, needs to provide a written notarized consent to the waiver. So this waiver does meet the criteria set forth in the ordinance, and we are seeking a recommendation from the Board of Superv, from the Planning Commission to the Board of Supervisors, excuse me, on this requested waiver. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have, and the representative is here also.
All righty. Questions of Mrs. Perkins?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would the representative of the property like to speak to us?
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, we, it's up to us to make a recommendation to the board on this waiver, buffer waiver.
Madam Chair.
Sir?
I believe that this is appropriate use. The waiver meets the criteria set forth in the zoning ordinance. The adjoining property owner has given his consent to the waiver. I would like to make a motion that we approve this waiver, or recommend approval of the waiver.
Second.
All right, it's been moved to recommend approval of this buffer waiver request. Any other conversation or comments regarding this? Okay, Mr. Moan?
Moan, yes.
Dunlap, yes.
Trippert, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Oden, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Rocket, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marston, yes.
Unger, yes.
And the chair votes yes. Let's see, this will go to the Board of Supervisors. Let me get that date for you. It's January the 14th. Okay, our next item is an information discussion item for the commission, and it is Comprehensive Policy Plan Amendment 01-14, Blaine Properties Sewer and Water Service Area, including parcels for parcels 33A-113 and 33A-124. A change to the SWZA boundary to include approximately 433 additional acres in the vicinity of the Blaine properties to the SWZA. The additional properties include parcels 33A-78A, 33A-114B, 33A-114C, 33A-77B, 33A-123A, and 33A-123B. This property is currently designated with a commercial and industrial land use. The properties are generally south of Cedar Hill Road, Route 671, north of Hopewell Road, Route 672, and west of Interstate 81, and are located in the Stonewall Magisterial District. Mr. Ruddy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This represents initially the first and only one and only Comprehensive Policy Plan Amendment application that we received this year. Of course, June of every year is the date in which anybody can suggest, propose an amendment to the county's Comprehensive Plan. This one was received. It went to a work session with the Board of Supervisors in August, and of course, that followed some initial Comp Plan Committee review of the application. What you see on your screen to your left are the two properties highlighted in black. Those are the Blaine properties that the chairman described here initially in the introduction. Again, those two properties are for which the initial request came in for. The request, of course, was to include them in the county's sewer and water service area. In the sewer and water service area, the SWZA is very close to them, adjacent to them to the east and just a little bit to the south. As noted and as seen on the land use plan that's on the screen to your left, the property's designation currently is industrial and commercial. And this is the current land use plan that is part of the county's northeast land use plan and exists today. So you can see again, the properties highlighted with a black boundary for the Blaine properties. So when the discussion started on this application and continued at the work session, the input was, as we're looking at these two properties, it would make sense to consider the properties immediately adjacent to it that are already designated or designated with a consistent commercial or industrial land use, and see if it makes any sense to bring the boundary around those two properties, excuse me, around those additional properties to clean it up and make it consistent. So when it came back to the Comprehensive Plans and Programs Committee, we did indeed do that as a committee. They looked at the entire area and said, if we're going to move forward with this proposed change to the sewer and water service area boundary, not only should we look at the two properties for which the request came in, but we should include the additional properties that you listed earlier. And those additional properties, really just to the south of those highlighted. And on the screen to your left right now is the proposed new map, if you will, the amendment to the northeast land use plan, which, as we can hopefully follow along with this, and I'll do some annotation as we go, that also includes, again, this is the sewer and water service area boundary in this location, and this exists, excuse me, as it's proposed to come around, I'm using the same highlighting color with a very broad line here, but generally speaking, that gives you an understanding of where the boundary is proposed to go. So as a committee, the committee felt that it was appropriate to locate them in that area. The committee also suggested a couple of different things. Make some minor adjustments to the map to make sure that the road was in the correct location, followed the split in the property line and the existing road in that location, that there was no visual dead space between old land use designations, and to make sure it clearly followed property lines. Of course, that's what we like to make sure is done today. In addition, the Comp Plan Committee suggested some additional language. So the map that you, again, is on the screen to your left, reflects that Comp Plan Committee endorsement. And as you can see, the north-south road that would connect Cedar Hill Road to Hopewell Road runs right down the middle of the property, again, consistent with the property lines and in the general vicinity of the existing Jeremiah Lane. And to the east of that, you see the commercial land use. To the west of that, of course, the industrial land use designation. Again, that's the map that is, in essence, the change to the northeast land use plan, the change to the Comp Plan that you see here tonight. Moving forward a little bit, the additional language that was talked about to the Comp Plan Committee has been provided in your agenda, and it really seeks to just add some text or some clarity, as we continue to do that when we make these land use changes, to make sure that, again, there's some understanding of what's proposed here, and that is it's commercial and industrial in character. There's north-south Collector Road serving that area. That provides a boundary for the different land uses. But as always, flexibility should be offered in the final balance of, excuse me, in the final balance, location of the different land uses. And of course, we propose a reinforcement of what we apply with our rezonings. Future applications shall adequately address any potential impacts to public facilities, including transportation, and shall make sure that those improvements are put in place. So again, this is a discussion item here this evening. We're seeking any input that the Planning Commission would like to provide. The Comp Plan Committee has looked at this, proposed some changes, if indeed ultimately it's deemed appropriate to move forward. Those changes include cleaning up the map, changing the SWZA boundary, and adding the additional text for clarity. If there are any questions or any input that the commission would like to provide, I'd be happy to take that right now.
Comments to Mr. Ruddy about this request? Any?
Yeah, just, how's the property zoned now?
The property is zoned RA, rural area. And each, excuse me, all of the properties to the west of 81 in that section are RA.
No chance of it getting approved for residential if it was approved for water and sewer, though?
No, sir. And of course, that's a big distinction to reinforce, that the sewer and water service area allows public water and sewer to be extended for commercial, industrial, and institutional uses. The UDA, the urban development area boundary, which stops a little further south, perhaps at the Snowden Bridge project, that's, the UDA boundary provides the ability for residential land uses to be in there, in addition to the commercial, industrial, and institutional. So by policy, you're correct. No residential land uses would be allowed with the rezoning in that area.
I think it's a great use for it.
Any other comments?
If I, Ms. June?
Yes.
Just to clarify, Mike, what's the, we're looking at an expansion of about 133 acres of the SWZA or 400-acre expansion of the SWZA?
It's a 433-acre expansion. The initial two properties were just a couple of acres short of 100 acres.
Okay.
And then when you looked at the additional change in the boundary, it totaled approximately 433 acres. And if you can follow, on the screen there, of course, is the proposed sewer and water service area boundary as it would be, and I believe this next one, maybe not, I apologize. Go back to the original one, which shows, if you can see, the existing sewer and water service area boundary. Again, it runs south of these properties and over.
It's the original boundary, right there.
I saw it through the committee three times, I could say.
So again, that's where we are today, and that's what is being proposed.
I think, I think one thing, Mike, that was attractive to me, I think it's the first time we really have seen as a commission the capabilities of the sanitation authority in a specific area for service purposes. Does anybody have any thoughts about looking at that, thinking it's helpful or not? I'm still not sure whether or not there's capability and capacity, but...
Madam Chair, I think that this is consistent with the county's plans for this area, but more importantly, including this within the SWZA sends the message to the sewer and water provider that they need to start making plans to either upgrade or expand service in this area.
A lot of acres further north that want service as well, so there's a challenge in how it is divided up, so...
I think, of course, it's the whole northeast land use plan, and this is just a small portion of it, but obviously, the public utilities, the transportation are all key components that need to be addressed in this land use plan.
Is this increased since the work session? Is that what, is that what we're looking at here tonight? What's the difference between when we all, we had this discussion back a few months ago?
The difference is, it does include those additional properties. When we saw it at the work session, it was just the first two properties with a discussion, should we look at the other areas? And then the Comp Plan Committee came back and said yes, as we do, and this is the boundary that should be there if we indeed include those other properties.
So that's where we're getting the 97-acre additional areas? I see down
Yeah.
The change to the boundary of the sewer, when we go down to the, it says background, and so we're seeing that 97.55-acre change to the boundary. So that's what we're actually looking at, is that additional 97 acres on top of what we had originally? Is that? Or, up top, I see 433 additional acres. Come down, I see a 97.55-acre change.
Change to the boundaries.
Sorry, Mr. Kenny, can you? Sorry, Mr. Kenny, can you point me in the direction that you're looking at?
The first page, you're coming down, proposed amendments, and then you're attached, you'll find a map indicating the proposed modification of the Swazza which results in approximately 433 additional acres being included in the Swazza. Then you go down where it says background refers to the June 1st, 2014 deadline and there it had a 97 and a half acre basically changed to the boundary.
Yeah, the 97 acres was the initial identified two parcels.
Okay.
And the 433 was calculated out through GIS as being inclusive of that, but the new boundary change from where it is today to where it will be in the future.
330 additional acres roughly.
Okay.
But the 97 acres was disjointed.
It would have created quite a bit of a dogleg in there. That's correct. Yes.
And I think that's, that's an important point too is that, you know, the Swazza did already exist, you know, in proximity, but if it just was extended to bring those parcels in, you know, it would have been really fragmented, you know, so just kind of provide some cleaner edges.
Agreed. Anything else from Mr. Ruddy? I think that's it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We're on to our last item and it's the annual review of the Planning Commission bylaws and rules and regulations. Mr. Lawrence is running to help us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you noted, every fall, we look at the bylaws, make sure there's nothing in there that we want to tweak before we do the adoption in January. And your bylaws work task force, work group, I guess is what we're calling them, reviewed them in the past couple of months and provided one suggestion and we've incorporated that plus some other grammatical issues we found. And just quickly run through it, very minor, but what you see up there in red is what we're suggesting be stricken and the green is the replacement language. So, it's just really a rewording, a rephrasing how that words, how that reads. The second one up there, the 5-7 at the bottom half of the screen, we realized that we actually have an executive committee, not a, just a committee, so we threw the term in there. Two other changes that I just want to draw your attention to is we added the phrase under the purview of the commission and then we just reworded the lower one. We felt that there was some discrepancy in how it's being read, so let's clarify it. And what that says is the 90-day period for the Planning Commission to make a rezoning recommendation starts after the first commission meeting. So, that clarified that. What the work group suggested is we need to also look at the 21-day clause and that's in your bylaws that say if you receive a revised application less than 21 days to your meeting, you shall table it essentially. You haven't had enough time to digest it. There's been a lot of thoughts that that was a little too stringent, so the thought was, okay, we ought to revisit that. And I can tell you a little bit of background, the 21 days when we first adopted it a number of years ago, it was because it linked in with how we produce the agendas, the application deadline, the state law for advertisements, and then getting the agendas printed and out to you all. I call it a technology issue that we've, I've got a solution for, but one of the things we've advanced with using the iPads means we don't have to make all the copies, we don't have to wait for the US Postal Service, so we can get things to you a lot faster and cheaper. But what we're suggesting, and if my calendar, I'm going to walk you through it real fast. Right now, we send the agendas to you about two weeks prior to a meeting. We typically get them out to your iPads on Friday, about a week and a half, two weeks before a meeting. What I'm suggesting, and it's hard to see in this, but I'm suggesting that we change it and we sort of truncate a little bit and that we would give it to you on the 16th hypothetically, that's Friday on the right. So, if you guys, if you all are okay, we would put the agendas on the iPads five days before your meeting. You only have five days to review it instead of 12, so that's the, I'm looking for some guidance on that. But if we're able to truncate that time aspect, we can also truncate when we need to have revised applications submitted to the department. And our suggestion is if we get it on a Monday, what is that, seven, about nine days before your meeting, my staff still has enough time to write the staff report, create the actual agenda, and push it out to your iPads that week. So, what I would suggest is if you're comfortable with that five-day time to review your agendas, I want to make sure it works for my staff also as we produce things. So, maybe we do a test trial for a couple of months, see if the truncated review time on your end works, see if it works on the staff preparation side, and I guess, report back the end of February, beginning of March, and make sure that everyone's comfortable. And if so, we can go through and revise the bylaws pertaining to the 21-day clause and reduce that possibly to nine days. So, I'm not suggesting at this point that we change the 21 days, but I am, and that's why in your agendas, it's high-lit in yellow, it was more for thoughts and conversations, but not for revisions. But everything else in your bylaws that we, that's high-lit and as we discussed, we would suggest we bring that to you in January when you adopt your bylaws for the upcoming year. We're certainly available to answer any questions you have. If you have any other suggested revisions, we'll try to incorporate them. But if you're comfortable with what we've presented, we'll make that part of your agenda in January when you adopt your bylaws and roles and responsibilities. Are there any questions about that? Do you understand the timeframe, the five-day agenda prep and all that?
Cool.
I guess I will have one question on this, on the timeframe. If you get revised proffers, I know those still have to have some sort of, I think, legal review. Is that still enough time for...
And that's, that's an excellent point. And that's what we want to try. Yeah, we want to, that's why we want to say, give us a couple of months to try to work this out. This 21-day only applies to the proffer revisions, so we have to have some rezonings to go through that to see if it works or not. But it definitely truncates the county attorney's review time, it truncates the planning department's review time, and if that proffer revision affects another department, we're going to want that other department to pipe up. The proposal is to, basically, typically the revisions you know are coming, but when the revision shows up by the deadline, we would only have two days to get a response together and then put it into the agenda. So, it definitely, it cuts down on the timeframe, but we think from a business-friendly perspective, we want to see if we can do that to make it easier. Otherwise, when someone wants to revise the proffers, they have to wait a clear month before they can get it back to you.
Okay, that's good.
We'll try to work through it for a couple of months.
I'm not comfortable with the five days. There's not enough time to review it, especially since we'll get it on a Friday, so the weekend shot, so we've got to try and scramble in here.
Okay.
Couple of days to meet with you. As far as going from 21 days to 14 days, I wouldn't have a problem with that. We could get, your example up there, that it would go out on a Friday, if it came out on Tuesday, that'd be fine on the 13th. That'd give us, you know, the rest of that week there to try and research.
Because then we'd have to, what we were trying to do, we were trying to reduce the 21 days and still make sure everyone has enough time. If we try to push it out to you on like a Tuesday, a week prior to the meeting instead of five days, we'd probably say it's a 14, under the scenario, we'd probably say 14 days for revised application to show up if that...
I wouldn't have a problem with that. We could shave a week off for them. And then the other thing is if we do get revised proffers, unless they're signed, I don't want to see them.
Agree. Agree. If they're not, if they're not signed, notarized like normal, then it's not, it's not a revision that we can consider.
Mr. Thomas.
I agree a lot with Gary. I, I'm not too concerned about the five days now, but if we go back to where we were a few years ago when we were getting a lot of applications, a lot of proffers, this is okay for onesies, but what if we have a meeting where we have three revisions at one meeting and staff and council and everybody only has two days to review three different sets of changes? I don't think it'd be workable. So, I think, I think the compromise or, you know, giving up a little of the time, but maybe not all of it.
Okay.
Leaving a little safety cushion in there might be the way to go. So, I like the 14, like Gary was saying.
Okay.
Any other thoughts here? Yes, sir.
Well, we, I know there were some emails passed around between some of the commission members on this particular item and, ladies and gentlemen, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we were talking about 10, 10 days. I know we're probably splitting hairs, but, you know, Mr. Thomas has brought up a good point. Right now, we don't seem to be over, we don't seem to be swamped with applications, but two days and you got three sets of revised proffers to look at, that's, that might be taxing things. So, that's, that's why I was thinking maybe a little bit longer. I will certainly defer to your staff's opinion of what they think they can do.
And I think that's one reason I'm suggesting we don't, we don't revise the bylaws pertaining to that 21-day trigger. Let's, let's adjust the agenda preparation, make sure that we have enough time on your end to review things and my staff to prepare them. At Gary's suggestion, instead of using Friday as a mailing day, we could try using Tuesday as a mailing day and see if that makes a difference. On our end, it's only a two-day shift, so it's not a significant shift from what we're currently doing, but we'll see if we can accommodate that and then cut back on the revised day from 21 to 14 and try to work that for a few months and see what happens. There's no doubt when the economy is going strong, we have multiple rezonings come through, it would be a challenge. But it's more of let's figure out where the best spot is so we can be business-friendly, we can make sure staff can get you what you need and certainly allow enough time for you all to do the reviews before you walk in here. So, if you're comfortable with that, I'll shoot for a Tuesday, the week before Planning Commission meetings to have your, have the agendas on your iPads and I'll work from that point forward. And we'll touch base in a couple of months, maybe at the retreat, we can talk about it a little bit to make sure it's working out.
So, what we should look forward to is at our first meeting in January, we will adopt the changes that are in it.
Correct.
And we'll practice on the 21-day thing. Is that it?
Yes, we'll prepare for that.
Admiral Baker 2005, we were scrambling for every day to prepare for some of those meetings.
And, I mean, I don't know if we're going to have a rezoning to, over the next couple of months to push that, but that's certainly something to think about before we adopt the bylaw change, make sure we can accommodate during, during the pressure times.
I'm trying.
Good point.
Oh, me.
And that's all we have in the bylaw front.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the work on this and every, and the fearless force of them that made, made comments for us. We are at the end of our agenda. We do have a January meeting, the first one of the year, and that will be... Amazing. Seventh of, of the month, so we should be prepared for that. Is there anything else to come before the commission?
Second.
Second. And I keep saying that, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much and I wish everyone a very happy...
Merry Christmas.
Christmas and New Years.
Merry Christmas.